What's going on guys, your ass here today we are back to Frostpunk 2. Alright, so our last save didn't actually save correctly, so we have a little bit of changes here. Now, you'll notice that we have a couple of different factions down here. We have actually been utilizing them a little bit more. I wanted to test it out before we started doing the video, just in case. So you're going to notice that they have like mobilizing forces that'll basically make people go to work for you. However, they have the councils which you can promote or condemn to basically put one of these factions against each other. But the main thing is going to be the favors here. So you can sit there and click raise funds. It's too soon to perform this action on this community. But you can see that it's going to worsen your relationship and it's going to be a huge amount of heat stamps. So that's going to be seventy-nine and New Londoners, if you're going to do it over here. Uh, let's see here, it'll be two hundred and sixteen. So technically, the New Londoners fund so much more products and that's going to allow you to get your heat stamps up to allow you to actually have like more housing infrastructure. As you guys can see, we haven't really necessarily filled any of the requirements yet, but I thought we made enough progress now to continue the video. Roughly around where we were ended off at last time. So we have our housing district inside of here. We're working on getting a fourth housing district inside of this cave area. I have another housing district built inside of this cave. This is basically going to protect them against the cold. We're going to eventually get a generator up. That way they have a little bit of extra heat. But our goal is going to be to try to get all the housing situated, then we're going to get the food situated. We might worry about the materials before we run out. I mean, we have a decent amount of stockpile that's going to last twenty-seven weeks technically. And then we're going to focus on our exploration of the area. Once we click our other button there, we'll be able to see that. So let's see you. We should be pretty close to opening up this area. We already have this guy fully dug out, so we just need to build a building on top of him. And this episode, we're also going to learn how to build a research center since we couldn't actually figure that out last time. This guy's gonna be kind of weird because you have to find like a place that's open to be able to place it inside of. And so far, I've yet to actually find that. So hopefully, now that we're having like our housing situated like fully completed, we'll be able to actually find like a proper place inside the city to place it on down. See to the council where delegates represent the city's inhabitants meet to discuss an inactive law. Huh, interesting, okay. So that's going to be for stuff later on. I mean, obviously, if we have good stockpile, food stockpile, all this stuff is going to be essential. Heating hub, that's going to be good for further out. But thankfully, all of our housing is going to be built inside of somewhat of a cave, so they should be a little bit more protected against the winters. So go back to two times speed. Now, let's see. Well, actually, you know what? I have enough stockpile right now, the way we did this, that we can go and get some more food. It's a shame that we can't actually grab, well. Into... Would I be able to build there? Hold on. So it'd be one short, but it would get the heat bonus. Actually, we could do it like that though and see how it has a little fire. So as long as that's going to be next to any of your districts, it's going to get a little bit of a bonus. So that'll be good. That'll get us some more food. We are running low on coal too, so that's going to be another thing. We have to get another extraction unit up and running, which is what he's doing right now. I mean, we have enough. Technically, we could start working on our materials too, but let's try to get the housing and food up first. Because I want to at least be sure. Oh, hold on. So we have a hundred and fifty-seven heat stamps, so we got a little bit. Yeah, workforce is just too spread out. We're fine. We keep the workers alive. We might actually survive. As soon as this stuff gets built, we'll actually have another decent amount of people. Thirty-seven registered to six, that's not good. We do have housing over inside of this area. Our food district's going to be done here in a second. Alright, so we have four hundred and sixteen, so we are going to need to pull. So let's do that, and that should be enough for our material district, which is going to be another extraction unit. Alright, so our food is now positive. Our shelter is fine. Everybody has a house technically. So materials surplus and goods limited. Our stockpile is zero on that, so I mean, that's not really too bad. So our food, we can hold fifty thousand before we really need to worry about it. So the main thing is going to be to get our materials up, which I mean, we have a really large surplus right here. But I'm enough to bump that up. Alright. So we've got those two positive. Once that gets built, we'll be good. Alright, so let's do two times speed. We'll get that built. I mean, technically, everybody has a house. Now, it is about to have a colder season here in a second. So we probably should be worrying about having like a central heating unit over inside of that other area there. So we're going to need four hundred workforce, but good news is not the heat stamps that we're having issues on. Yes, this heating hub, we're going to require forty-four more first. Uh, let's see, lowering heat demands in neighboring districts. And we have like a whole nother section down here that we could have for housing if we really need to. It's like you, does it say total demand is forty? So is that just saying what the overall output is for the generator? Yes, we need a hundred and five. Alright, so that's the bare minimum amount of food workers that we can have for it to stay positive. So we'll do that. Yeah, let's get this housing district out in the middle of nowhere, because I feel like that's just going to be another really big train. So let's do you. We don't have the heat stamps anymore. So let's see, can we actually borrow some from our council? Let's get our workers from the prefab district right now. We don't necessarily need that, but since we had the building built, we don't have to worry about that for the time being. So we'll go back inside of you. See, so we don't want to expose to winter, because that's going to increase our heating costs. So that's going to give us plus twenty heat. So call that good. That's going to get us more coal. Alright, so let's go back to two times speed. We'll see if we can get some heat up in here and see if we can save some people. Obviously, our material district, we're going to need at least one more. We have a decent amount of people slowly starting to get sick here. We haven't actually got a research facility up yet, and hopefully, we're eventually going to be able to get like a hospital. I don't even think I've done this faction. See, now this one gives another two hundred and seven. Can I require more heat stamps? So I mean, we can grab two hundred and seven from you. They'll say they trust you to use it wisely. So that's going to allow us to get the other buildings, which is what we were doing beforehand. So we have to get the research going before we can actually place any of those. So most of these are going to say we need more workers. So let's wait for this research to get, or the building to be built real quick. Once this district's up, we'll be able to pull the workforce again. So I don't want to really pull too much since we seem to be doing decent. Due to the cold, some of our people have froze to death. Eighty froze to death. That's not good. Alright, so we have a little bit of extra housing so far. So we need four hundred workforce. Now, it looks like this is all yellow, so we might need another heat area inside of that zone to bump it up even higher. So that's going to be workforce. Alright, so I've been looking at this kind of wrong, so you want to click on this expand district. This is going to use fifty heat stamps and is going to use fifty prefabs. That's going to allow us to extend our housing area out. It's only going to extend it out by three, but that should allow us to be able to build the research institute. So you'll see that it's going to be housing district is going under an expansion, and that's why it was over on the left side telling us to do that one first. It's just I was misunderstanding it. So that was totally on me. Stewart, a cold wave has taken in the city. People were found frozen to death, not only in streets, but in some houses and workplaces as well. There, stick with grief and anger. People fear the horror of years past will return onto your leadership. They went to council to ensure new laws can help fight with the crisis. Reassuring them would be prudent. People continue to freeze to death until the cold is brought down. Alright, so I mean, we're working on that as fast as we can. So we're going to have to expand that out. I mean, more of the mini hubs would also help as well. So I mean, this is all yellow, so I'm really curious to see like if building this. We have to finish building to see what happens first. Alright, so now we should theoretically be able to go inside of you. Aha! And now that we extended the district, we're actually able to build our research institute. That took a little bit to figure out, so it's kind of confusing the way they set that up. Alright, so now we're able to research new ideas for the coal mines, which is then going to increase our coal output here. We still need to wait for this generator to be built to see if that goes from like a blue building to a like... I don't know if gold's like the best one or what we actually need for the color, to be honest. So I mean, I feel like some of them are just like color coded differently, but at the same time, this is what? Forty, so if we build this, is it going to be only like twenty that we need technically? We'll see what happens once it gets built. Alright, so at our current pace, we are losing material. We have enough housing and we have enough food. Technically, we're getting more housing because people are freezing to death, so that's not too good, but one step at a time. Material is going to be the next thing that we're going to have to worry about. Alright. A small crowd gathers outside the new research and so arguing about how to exploit the last coal veins. The stalwarts and New Londoners want us to lean on machine-powered mining, but the Frostlanders would have us pursue a more frugal solution. They would never display such discord under the captain's role. You have to choose who to entrust with developing their ideas. The committee of New London have different perspectives. You may not be able to please everybody. We need new ideas to move forward. However, the different communities may propose diverging answers to the same issue. They will only pursue solutions that align with their worldview. Choosing a community to develop an idea will improve your relation with that community. Ah, I see. Alright, so the coal mines. Alright, so it looks like we have a couple of different ideas. No one else shares this idea. Dust coal mine, mining operation where residue coal dust is sucked up and compressed into requests to make a maximum use of the resource, plus a hundred and fifty coal output. Disease is slightly increased and material demand is twenty. Stalwarts agree with this idea. Blasting coal mine constructed in extraction district operating using explosive drilling to rapidly exploit coal deposits generating noxious fumes. Okay, so squalor is increased, so I'm guessing that's going to be more of like fighting and stuff. The filthy grime pollution present in the city is produced by generators, heavy machinery and poor sanitation. Uh, increased disease, low population growth and wears down districts. Ooh. The New Londoners blasting the coal mine operation using explosive drilling to, whoa, 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 you two? But that's the same thing. Hundred and eighty output, hundred and eighty output, research city has fifty coins. I mean, we have the coins. So technically, the stalwarts are forty-five percent of our, or the New Londoners are forty-five percent of our city. Where we have the stalwarts is twelve percent of the city. They do have a little bit less bonuses. Fortune always will favor the bold. Let the best of us soar and elevate without one of them. I feel like we should go with the majority of the population. So research it. Construct newly researched building in the extraction district. Alright, so we also are going to have to expand out one of our extraction districts. And as we understand some of this GIF. So that'd be you guys, so let's expand. Uh, is that the best one to expand to, or should I do like over in this area? Yeah, because we'll get the two different heat bonuses there. So we'll expand out that way. Alright, so that's pretty good. We only have eighteen available workforce. Employed is four thousand five hundred and forty. Alright, so this hub is almost built, so this is what I'm most interested in. Is this actually going to change the color? You know what? Let's do like regular speed. Affecting other districts near housing plus forty demand. So is that going to, total demand is zero now, so see how it's not going to be on our grid? And then if I go inside of my building menu. Alright, so that's going to retain the same color even though it is changed technically. But we're looking for this heat demand of zero to be technically like fully efficient, so obviously, that's not running, so that doesn't matter. So it's got a demand of thirty inside of this area. That's just prefabs, that's why it's turned off. Uh, let's see, what about the other housing? Alright, so this demand zero, so basically everyone housing-wise is completely good. Oh, you can actually set how many people are inside your housing. Oh, well, that's interesting. Alright, so the research institute, do we actually see like how long it's going to take to take it on to its next level? I did not mean to rush it, but you know what? That's fine. Oh, there we go, bottom right, sorry, eleven percent. So should I, I feel like we should build a lot more of these heat pumps. So we're going to need the heat stamps and we're also going to need workforce, but as long as we keep everybody into a place where we have enough heat going on, that will be good. So right now, we have unfulfilled minus one. Which is pretty good, honestly. So another one of our generators just must have finally finished. So we have enough food to sustain our people at the moment. We are... Let's see. Technically, slowly going up. We could always use more food though, to be honest. So if we like open up this way, that's a whole bunch of fertile soil. We do have another like extraction area that we can do. Materials were down quite a bit. We're going to need to find more people though. Alright, so hold on. So that'll be inside of you. So we're going to need a logistics division, so that's going to be four hundred workforce. I mean, technically, we could pull a bunch of people right now and build it. Because I assume that's going to actually open up the area too, but it doesn't say like what are these different zones for? Rule is an old way station better down during the whiteout years. We can restore it as a rear base for exploration efforts. Logistics division and build you real quick. Alright, so once we get our workforce, we'll add this back inside of the coal. That way, we'd almost completely screw our village over here. So hopefully, this is going to allow new population to like find us, that way we're able to grow our city again. Or that's my goal at least for building this logistics division. Which I know is kind of a out-there solution, but a lot of these games, you eventually find like other colonies to join you along the way. We are about to have a colder season come in. It's going to be minus one for a few days, then it'll go back to the warmer season, which then will be really in a very positive mindset right now. I mean, for the most part, we're doing fine. New building proposed by New Londoners. Alright, so that's going to be where we can build inside the extraction districts. Go for this to get built. We can also survey frozen lands, New London, and find sources of fuel to ensure its future. Overpopulation dwindling full reserves force many residents of New London to take refugee in the temporary shelters built around a small hot spring. Its inhabitants wait for conditions to improve and enough for them to return home. Take the New Londoners back in, so let's see. But I feel like we should do it. That's going to be a massive amount of people, but it's going to be a massive amount of workforce that we just got. Stewart, the stockpiles of materials the captain has gathered have run out. After so many years, our resources in the pit are growing barren. Current outputs will satisfy some of the demand, but it probably will melt over time. We must reach the new deposits, otherwise the city and us will suffer. Explain our new districts to get to more materials. Ew, requires twenty frostland teams. Okay, so right now, we're just going on an expedition like this. Alright, so let's go back inside our city. Is this going to be a huge increase in the amount of people? Alright, so right now, we only have ninety-nine, so we don't really have anything too crazy. Uh, let's see, so you have rest research, but I don't think there's really researching anything else, right? So housing insulation, advanced coal mines, pump jacks. Uh, let's see, I feel like the housing insulation is probably the next one. Base heat demand of housing districts is decreased, so that's another good one. Abestis lining, ooh. To take advantage of the natural properties of its fibers, dwindling will be upgraded with asbestos-laden materials to prevent heat leaks and promote energy conservation. Okay, so basically, you can do this, you can do this, or you can do this, but we're all going to give you the exact same option. So we'll go forty-five percent of the city, because I feel like that's probably our biggest population. May as well, you know, keep them happy. And let's see, so let's pause replay, so we need to do extraction you. We need three hundred workforce and we need eighty stamps. So really, we're going to need our expedition team here. So I mean, are they gathering the people, or did they not actually do that? Estimated time of arrival, six days. Okay, so it's going to take six days for them to get there. So I don't think we need it anymore since we already sent people that way. So maybe we can have you fully powered off, actually. If I'm reading that correctly. Because if we go back inside here, it should still say... I believe it's still working at least. Alright, so will any of you actually give us enough coin to make a difference? Alright, so nineteen weeks for you. Ten weeks, so we're getting pretty close for that, and I'm pretty sure you're not going to be able to do anything at all. So yeah, so thirty-three weeks for you. So I mean, we're basically maxed out on borrowing money from people. So basically, we're stuck at the heat stamps. So once we get to eighty, we'll be able to do it. It will do it inside of, uh, this area. That's going to be in between two districts though, so that's going to bring up a little bit of tension probably. So let's get this to eighty. Okay, so we got a little bit more workforce too, so that's good. Alright, so pause you, and let's see. Would you want you in like the center of this city, or would you want it more on the edge? I feel like the center is closer to where the mines are. You can monitor the ziggies in your city at the bottom left corner of the screen. Ziggist means spirits of time. It describes the direction of your city on the three axes: technology, economy and society. Alright, so that's going to get us more coal. Right now, we have a demand of seventy-three, which we're not able to gather enough coal. Hopefully though, once we get this up and running, we'll be good. Alright, so we have less than a day for refugees, then we'll be able to max out a lot of these other buildings here. We're going to have a lot of sick people too though, because we don't have enough housing for all the new people. Unless we go ahead and I don't have enough heat stamps. But I'd say if we could expand the housing district in one of these areas that's already like good on heat, theoretically, it would have worked. So as we get to fifty, I'll try to expand the housing up some. So we got forty. With the new mine, the impending doom of deftnicole is postponed, yet differences between the communities remain. The weakening captain wanted to establish a council to settle them. He didn't live to see it through. It falls to you, Stewart. The people of New London want a second house run. The first decision whether you should continue to leave the city. Yeah, I don't think I should really trust you guys in making that council. Every time you do, you basically outthrow me, so I'll put that on the back burner. You know, we'll keep it as a maybe. Because right now, we have plus three housing, so hold on. So once we get fifty-three. Now, if I expand, ooh, there is material there though. So we need workforce for that, so we'll be able to expand you in a minute. What about you? Let's see, so let's try to expand this area. And that's actually really good bonus. So let's go and just checkmark that. We'll expand our housing population there. Theoretically, they should just automatically add in more buildings, but I'm not really sure how that works. We'll find out here in a minute. Alright, so we need to build a city hall, and we need to pass the vote of confidence. So what do we actually need to build that? That was inside of the central area here, so we need two hundred workforce and eighty heat stamps. So we can't really do anything until we get the eighty heat stamps. We should have a massive increase in workforce here in a minute. Yeah, we don't have enough people to like run it on like the bare minimum. New passive boots proposed by New Londoners. And now our surplus is doing fantastic. So now technically, we can pull... We'll go to like the bare minimum on some of these areas here, so that's just extraction district, so we don't have to worry about you. Alright, so keep that at fifty-five. That's good. Once it gets cold season, we'll be able to increase that again. Stewart, during a routine medical examination performed by stalwarts, a small group of frostlanders refused to be assessed. These checkups are relics of years past. When a cough and cold endangering the city, that's gone now. We've adopted. One said, "No point continuing this invasion privacy." The stalwarts maintain that regular physicals help ensure the safety of our workers. It is vital we monitor our citizens' health. One form manned pushback. We've had epidemics in the past. We mustn't allow another one. Some group of frostlanders will oppose the decision, but will improve with the New Londoners and stalwarts. Uh, well, let's see here. So relations with New London and stalwarts will be a little bit upset or do not interfere. Feel like we should just keep the side with majority of them, so that's going to lower some of their relations there, but we'll do our best to try to get you guys back up. Don't worry. I know you don't like your checkups. Nobody likes it, but it's required. Speaking of that, can you give me money? No, you cannot. Uh, too soon to perform this action, so it must be pretty close to that one. Alright, so nine weeks, so that guy in the middle should be able to get us it here pretty soon, and we should get our workforce after this cold season comes in. Alright, so that one fracking pump made such a huge difference in the amount of coal output that we have. This is crazy. Alright, so we have plus eight for housing as well, so technically, we can bump some of our demands down even more. So that's plus three now. Next time we get more people, we'll bump that back up. So really, we need to get a lot of... Hold on, so should I save it for the council, or should I just save it? Like the main thing that we actually need. By the way, a quick way to see where you actually need to be placing the stuff, if you just like look over and hover over the housing area. Once you have the housing expanded, you'll see Once you have the housing expanded, you'll see like that little black line going up or once you have your coal mine, it's going to go specifically inside of the coal mine extraction districts. And if you do the same thing for the central, it's actually going to be found inside the main city area. So place that down. Once again, we are about to have our cold season coming here in a minute. We're still in a little pause on food. Once we get our workforce, then we'll actually be able to like crank up the food output. It's just, we don't really wanna like really get our city too thin at the moment. I know we have a hundred and forty-nine weeks at the current capacity. We'll be okay. Alright, so two times speeds. That's going to become here in a minute. Once you get done, we should be good. Stuart, we're struggling with heat stamps. A group of stalwarts have come forward with an idea on how to solve it. We should research mechanical factory. Let us pursue it and the city will benefit. The stalwarts look at the distrust and other communities propose. They would surely appreciate you getting behind their idea. Uh, let's see here. So if they have a way to solve heat stamps, it warrants our attention. Promise stalwarts that you will research mechanical factory with sixty weeks. This is marginally improved the stalwarts. I mean, if it helps with the heat stamps, I don't see why not. Anticipation fills the air as the council opens. The captain ruled with a firm hand for years, but those times have died with him. Now the communities of the city went to their say. The stalwarts maintained our order on behalf of the captain and adhered to what the claim was for his vision of New London. Progress, merit and reason. The New Londoners and Frostlanders clash over our survival strategy. Though neither has a firm stance on economic or social issues. Then there are those who view the stalwarts with contempt for their role in New London's history, but they keep to the shadows for now. Based on your handling of this coal crisis, the first decision is whether you should maintain your role as steward. Here ye, here ye. At the moment, we're positive in coal, so I don't think they will be too upset, to be honest. When you return to the council in the future, there will be proposed new laws to vote upon, but for now, a special vote needs to happen. The communities of New London have to accept you as the leader. Be careful if you fail. This will be the end of your rule. Alright, so you are despised. That's not good. So you can vote or negotiate. Negotiate with delegates and try to influence the way they vote. Okay, so sixty-five are hesitant, fifteen are against, twenty are for. Guided voting cannot be invoked because guided voting charter law isn't forced. Okay, so basically we need to talk to each of these different people here and try to understand that. So thirty-two percent of the city. Uh, readily said flattery regardless of her boxing days. Okay, so on Mura, we should be able to basically just compliment. Uh, loves wind dried fish. Okay, so woodcock is fishy. The smell of frostland after a fresh snow. Cecilia loves snow. Over salts, lying about her history of traveling in the frostlands. So it looks like we're going to have to like pick and choose who we want to actually sway. Should the steward remain in power? If the vote fails, the delegates will immediately remove you from office. Alright, so negotiate with New Londoners, fifty-nine delegates mostly hesitant, nine delegates hesitant and thirty-two delegates mostly hesitant. So I mean theoretically, mostly hesitant, we should be able to sway them the most and they also had the biggest vote. So if we get fifty-nine on our side, all we need is sixty-five total. Alright, so now it's going to be a little interesting here. Should the steward remain in power? If this vote fails, the delegates will immediately remove you from office. Okay, so if we click vote for, now we actually have to pick like what we agree to, or do we have to accept all their terms? I think we have to do all of it. Workforce requirement decreased, of course. Uh, squaller slightly increased, heat demand. Ooh, that's not good. Plus ten percent prefab. I mean, I feel like uh, logistics bay where machines made factory expedition equipment on demand to minimize personal and storage needs. That's another really good one. Okay, so see how it says four sixty-one hesitant twenty-seven? So none of these are actually going to be like really above. So I feel like this is going to be the best one. It's the one that doesn't have any negatives. Alright, so let's do vote for you and see what we got here. So we have sixty-one for twenty-seven hesitant. So can we actually negotiate again with a different group? Everyone must aid expeditions by helping them in preparation for the journeys. Exploration time is slightly decreased. Uh, publicly den the faction and its members. Ooh. They will lose members and potentially lose seats in the council. That's not really nice towards them. Uh, base operations where staff officers subject handpicked scales to intensive drilling and oversee exploration expedition. Territory threat level decrease workforce requirements is four hundred. So I mean, we could do this one and have six or eighty-four for us. But the thing is, the more we agree to is just the more stuff that we're going to have negative effects for technically. But I mean, as long as we find the workers to get like this exploration thing up and running, then we should be fine. So I think both of these will be good. So now we have eighty-four for six hesitant and tenner against us. So let's go and do the vote.
The proposed law has been approved.
Huzzah! I see the law has passed. A steward, you shall remain then. Good. There are challenges ahead. Expanded coal extraction is a good success, but the vein will only last so long. We need to explore the frostland for a permanent source of fuel. Otherwise, the city will have no future at all. Alright, so we're going to need more housing, more food, a lot more materials here. So the main thing is going to be to get our materials up and running, but we have a huge amount of workforce now. So that's going to allow us to like really max out all of our material outputs here. So we can crank you up. Is this prefab's? Should probably get you up and running too. Uh, let's see. So I mean, the main thing is going to be materials though. So that's prefab's again. Coal plus seventeen right now. It's not the cold season yet. So we're good there until it gets worse. So we don't have the drill yet for you. Alright, so that's all broken. It's just that we need more materials in order to actually get like any more extraction districts up. So it's just going to be a matter of the heat stamps for that. Housing, we can actually go inside of you and just like bump it up immediately. And I believe inside of our other housing district, we should be able to do the same thing. Nope, you're at a hundred percent ready. Alright, so we're just going to expand our housing areas even more than what we already have. So that once again is going to be heat and stamps, one additional building slot. Alright, so I think that's actually maxed out since I've explained it once before already. That is going to be it for today, guys. If you guys enjoyed the stream, then like and subscribe and I will see you guys in the next one. Where it looks like we face the cold yet again. Looming materials struggling, food at a negative. Hold on, we can actually. Food still at a negative. Can we actually survive the next episode?